Notice of this meeting. This meeting is an open session of the Rosemont Park Board of Education being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act of the State of New Jersey. Notice of this meeting was sent to the Star Ledger, local source, the Home News Tribune, the Borough Clerk, school offices, and the district website. Roll call please. Mark Fernandez.
Here.
Lucy Figurito.
Here.
Zian Fonte.
Here.
President Dr. Brittany Kirkland.
Here.
Cindy Mago.
Here.
Jennifer McCar.
Here.
Chris Monroe.
Here.
Constance Quintella.
Here.
Vice President Michael Ann Reagan.
Here.
Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and every nation...
Here.
Here.
President Dr. Brittany Kirkland.
Here.
Executive Session.
Here.
Resolve that the Rosemont Park Board of Education meeting hereby convenes to executive session for discussion of the following subjects. Personnel matters, attorney-client privilege, and student matter. It is anticipated that the executive session will take approximately ninety minutes. The board may take action during public session. The board shall return to public session following executive session at approximately seven PM. The minutes of the executive session shall be released to the public when the reason for the executive session no longer exists. Motion to go into executive session.
I make the motion.
Second. Great. All in favor?
Aye.
We are officially in executive.
Oh, wait! (laughing) Right in the middle.
I think you're right, that's the spot.
Nope, nope. Maybe you...
I just keep blaming you, Lucy. But what's funny is they all, they came to the talent show, they said nothing to me.
Good evening, everyone. I don't know. Oh, okay. Hello? Good evening, everyone. Can I have a motion to return to public session?
Motion?
Second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
So now we're gonna move into our public participation portion on agenda items only. Each member of the public may speak a maximum of three minutes. Please state your first and last name for the record. Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public participation section. And now we are going to move to our principals' report, which is given by Mr. Flaca.
Everybody? Good evening, morning, members, Board of Education, students, community members, and all in attendance here and at home. Uh, thank you for having me tonight. Uh, I witness firsthand every day Sherman School and its extraordinary traditions connecting our students and community uh in meaningful ways. Tonight, I'd like to highlight some of those uh special moments. Uh, before I go into those special moments, uh today, we had a special moment of our own. In our kindergarten classes, we had uh baby chicken hatchlings, uh which was the talk of the school. Uh, so definitely not much learning happening today. Uh, they were uh very well-kept, uh so much so that I have to give a shout-out to my custodian, Mr. Gerald, who made it his mission to make sure that that incubator was working, and the electricity was uh always on. He would actually come on his own time and uh check, check them out, uh make sure that everybody was safe, so uh... But they were, they, they made everybody's day, so if anything went wrong today, the code word was go see the baby chickens. First, I'd like to recognize our outstanding student council, led by our dedicated fifth-grade teachers, Mrs. Matarante, Ms. Sheps, and Mrs. Cherica. Uh, this remarkable team of students takes on significant responsibilities, including organizing school events, serving as role models for our younger students, and continually working to improve the overall climate at Sherman School. Their leadership and commitment service, to service, to set a powerful example for the entire student body. Uh, at this time, I'd like to bring up those members of the student council, but I'd also like to invite uh Mrs. Matarante and Mrs. Sheps, if they would like to give out uh the certificates. Here we go. Our student council members are Ziba Alvi, Sofia Campanella, Stella Demansky, Isabella Duco, stay up there for a picture, Olivia Polo, Bailey Wilson, Matthew Hall, Kenzie Hughes, and Emily Perez. Get in there, Ms. Sheps, nice try. Thank you very much. Next, I would like to bring up our safety patrol, led by our supervisor, Ms. Rohrbach and Ms. McElrath. These dedicated students arrive early and stay late each day to assist our crossing guards and staff in ensuring that all students cross safely to and from school. Their commitment to safety of their peers demonstrates responsibility and care for our school community that extends beyond the classroom. At this time, I'd like to bring up the safety patrol members. Thank you for coming up. Grace Shemendlin, Alexa Chavez, Emily Perez, Ezekiel Motte, Ziba Alvi, Isabella Duco, Amelia Duco, Sofia Navarez, and Jeremiah Graham. Congratulations, everyone. And finally, tonight, we have the privilege of recognizing a student who exhibited exceptional calm and courage in a life-threatening situation. This remarkable young person saved their great-grandmother from choking by performing the abdominal thrust they learned during a Heart Association Assembly earlier this year, set up by Mrs. Rohrbach. This student quick, the student's quick thinking and ability to apply lifesaving knowledge under pressure truly exemplifies the character we strive to develop in all Sherman students. Congratulations, thank you for being our Sherman hero, Ezekiel Lamota. Incredible story. Thank you very much uh for having me, and have a good night. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations to all of the students being recognized tonight. And now, we are going to move into our student report. Uh, but before we do that, I understand it's a school night, so if you would like to leave, you're welcome to, but you're also welcome to stay. Okay, uh now, we're going to move into our student report from our student rep, Yana.
Roseville Pike High School is having a great spring semester. We kicked off March with state testing for all juniors in math and language arts, which went smoothly. The month wrapped up with our spring musical and pasta night, both which were fantastic events. Um, I want to say thank you to everyone who came out to support art, my fellow classmates, and everyone who was a part of it. And as we move into April, the Try and Music Honor Society is hosting a Skysone fundraiser. Um, they are also hosting a talent show, which all students that are in high school are like welcome to participate and show off their talents. The talent show will be in May, but there will be tryouts around the end of the month. And we are also looking forward to spring break and the start of the fourth marking period. Soon after, students will begin AP testing as well as additional state assessments in math, science, and language arts. Looking ahead into May, we have more to celebrate, including prom, the National Honor Society induction, and our spring pep rally. That's all.
Thank you very much. And now, I'll move into committee reports. We'll start with my right and work our way down. This side? Okay, great. Um, and then also, in regards to the superintendent's report, uh it was pre-printed and it was on the table that was located outside of the door. Um, so feel free to pick up a handout if you haven't done so already. And then, on the last page, you'll also notice that we have started a new initiative called Board Member Highlights. And so, each month, you'll see a letter from a board member talking about their experience, why they ran for the board, and their vision for the district. And so, for this month, you will see mine in there. Uh, next month, you will see Vice President Michael Lanz, and then, moving forward, you'll see it coming from each board member in alphabetical order based on their last name. So, I invite you to make sure that you're reading our newsletters and getting to know each of the board members, too. Now, moving to agenda items. First, we have policy. So, number one, district policy, second, reading. And can I get a motion to approve the policy section?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, if not, can I have a roll call, please?
Mark Fernandez?
Yes.
Lucy Figueroa?
Yes.
Z Infante?
Yes.
Cindy Mago?
Yes.
Jennifer McCar?
Yes.
Chris Monroe?
Yes.
Constance Quintella?
Yes.
Vice President Regan?
Yes.
President Dr. Kirkman?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Moving into personnel, two, staff appointment, three, new and non-tenured staff, four, substitute paraprofessional, five, resignation, six, job description, seven, Title IX coordinator, eight, personnel appointment change, nine, retirement, ten, retirement change date, eleven, leave of absence, twelve, district substitutes, thirteen, revision standard-based program, fourteen, ESL supplemental support program, fifteen, summer camp staffing list, sixteen, Roseville Park Preschool Parent Workshop, seventeen, high and middle school spring athletic coach, eighteen, Cores Program Aldean School, nineteen, musical appointment, twenty, lunch duty, Robert Gordon, twenty-one, Proctors, Robert Gordon. And can I have a motion to approve the personnel section?
Shen.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great, any discussion?
Actually, I would like to say um to Ms. Morrison, um you will be missed. She's actually a lovely math teacher. I know she had my daughter, my daughter had her in seventh grade, and she is amazing, and she will be missed.
Thank you. Um, if no one else has anything, we can move into roll call, please.
Mark Fernandez?
Yes.
Lucy Figuero- Figuero? Z Infante?
Yes.
Cindy Mago?
Uh, I'm gonna say yes to everything except number eighteen. I think I have to abstain because my son's doing course.
Jennifer McCar?
Yes.
Chris Monroe?
Yes.
Constance Quintella?
Yes, um, I guess I'm recusing from eighteen.
Vice President Regan? President Dr. Kirkman?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Under education, number twenty-two, New Jersey High Impact Tutoring Grant Extension, twenty-three, Roseville Park Public School District, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, preschool program plan, twenty-four, field trip request, twenty-five, tuition, special education, twenty-six, Summit Board of Education Additional Professional Hours, twenty-seven, Roseville Park Vision, twenty-thirty-five, twenty-eight, conference reimbursement, twenty-nine, U- Twenty-nine, USVTS, Work-Based Learning Experience. And can I get a motion to approve the education section?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, yes. Number twenty-seven, I just, I still really have a problem with the mayor and council being a part of a Board of Education Committee. Like, we're supposed to be nonpartisan and bringing in political group, no matter what the side that they're on, probably just isn't a good one. It's just my, my opinion, I don't know if there's any way to remove them.
This, this committee was done before we even was on the board, and when they did it in the past, it was done this way. So they never.
They ever actually meet?
That's up to the past, I don't, whoever was on it. But I know, we did it exactly how they did it, so.
I mean, I'm not saying you, you added them, I'm just saying, could they be removed?
Ms. Mago, are you making a motion?
Yes.
And your motion is?
Oh, sorry. Yes, I'm making a motion to remove the mayor and council as members of the Board of Education Committee.
I'll second it. So I think right now, we're doing roll call on the motion, right?
Roll call on the motion?
Okay.
Mark Fernandez.
No.
Lucy Figueroa.
Yes.
Figueroa. Z Infante.
No.
Cindy Mago.
Yes.
Jennifer McCar.
Yes.
Chris Monroe.
Yes.
Wait. No, I'm sorry.
No.
That is a no?
No.
Constance Quintella.
Yes.
Vice President Regan. President Dr. Kirkland.
No.
The motion is no. Five to four.
Okay. And now can we, or is there any further discussion on education section?
We're now voting on the regular, including twenty-seven as is.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Mark Fernandez.
Yes.
Lucy Figueroa.
Yes.
Z Infante.
Yes.
Cindy Mago.
Yes, except no to twenty-seven.
I'm abstaining from number twenty-five and twenty-six, and no to number twenty-seven.
Chris Monroe.
Yes.
Constance Quintella.
Yes, with a no to twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Vice President Regan.
Yes.
President Dr. Kirkland.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Moving to the business section. Number thirty, monthly certification. Thirty-one, approval of bills. Thirty-two, treasury report. Thirty-three, approval of minutes. Thirty-four, bill pay authorization. Thirty-five, use of building and grounds. Thirty-six, district medical service agreement. Thirty-seven, athletic field use. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the business section? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the business section?
I make the motion.
Great, is there a second?
Second.
Great, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mark Fernandez.
Yes.
Lucy Figueroa. Figueroa.
Yes.
Z Infante.
Yes.
Cindy Mago.
Yes, except, hold on, I gotta get you the right letters here. I need to abstain from thirty-five X and Y.
Jennifer McCar.
Actually, I do have a question on number thirty-six. Is, was this a previous appointment?
Yes, every year, we have a medical professional on staff, and it's every year we approve them. It's an annual event.
Yes, then.
Chris Monroe.
Yes.
Constance Quintella.
Yes, with abstention for thirty-five X and Y.
Vice President Regan.
Yes.
President Dr. Kirkland.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. And agenda item number thirty-eight, harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidences. Can I please get an approval for the harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidences? A motion to approve.
Yes, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Great, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Going across on the numbers, okay. Vice President Regan, Hibb twenty-four.
Yes.
Twenty-five?
Yes.
Twenty-seven?
Yes.
Twenty-eight?
Yes.
Twenty-nine?
Yes.
Mark Fernandez, twenty-four?
Yes to all.
Yes, yes to all.
Figueroa. Z Infante.
Yes to all.
Cindy Mago.
Yes to all.
Jennifer McCar.
Yes to all.
Chris Monroe.
Yes to all.
Constance Quintella.
Yes to all.
President Dr. Kirkland.
Yes to all.
Motion passed.
Great. Okay, now we're gonna move into our new business and school liaison report. Again, I'll start from my right going to left.
So, I was able to see the spring musical, Matilda, I know many of us were able to attend. The students were phenomenal, the staff was tremendous. To see the community come together so beautifully was inspiring, and to be back in this theater where I started, and to see these young people begin their journeys, whether it's to be an artist or not, to see what they learn from the arts was really beautiful, and I look forward to us continuing to foster our arts programs and figure out ways in which we can integrate both our athletics and our arts together, so that we can be that much more of a unified Roseville Park. I was very, I'm beaming with pride right now for the students who were part of the musical, congratulations. And that is all, that's my report.
I just wanna start by saying, I hope everyone has a good spring break, happy Easter and happy Passover if you celebrate. The rec committee is going to have an Easter egg hunt on April nineteenth from ten AM to twelve PM at the high school field. Thank you.
Middle school, they're currently, I have a raffle going on, online, I guess you could look up the, a lot of the parents been posting about it, or you could go to the PTO, PTA Facebook page to see more about it. When does it end? It ends next Thursday.
CPAG, the next CPAG meeting will be April tenth at six-thirty on, well, in person. Is it, Katie, is it also on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay, and also, there will be like a Zoom link, right? Okay. Beth Mainz from Mainz &amp; Weinberg will be presenting on financial planning for disabled dependents. The discussion will include an explanation of the different types of special needs trusts available and how to establish the appropriate trust that aligns with your family's goals. I encourage everyone to attend in person. Sherman PTA, Special Persons Day will be four-eleven. Springtown Cleanup will be April twelfth. Science Night will be April twenty-second, and Take Your Child to Work Day will be April twenty-fourth. The MVP Dance for grades K to two will be April twenty-fifth from six to eight PM in the Sherman Gym, ten dollars a ticket, there's a registration form online. Paper forms will be going home this week. Cultural Day will be April twenty-eighth. Teacher Appreciation Week will be May fifth through May ninth. There will be a plant sale on May ninth, and the Glow Party for third to fifth grade will be held in the Sherman Gym from seven to nine PM. Tickets are ten dollars RSVP by April fourteenth. May thirteenth will be the PTA Meeting and Elections. May twentieth will be the Spring Concert at the Middle School. May twentieth through twenty-first will be the Buy One Get One Book Fair. May twenty-eighth will be Field Day, and May twenty-eighth will also be the Color Run in the afternoon, and May twenty-sixth will be the Town Memorial Day Parade. As I stated many times, there are amazing things happening in our schools. It is my privilege tonight to talk about some of the wonderful things that have been happening at Sherman. Thank you, Mr. Fleck, for assisting me with this. On February, on February tenth, Sherman School hosted a truly heartwarming Breakfast with Seniors event. Students and families welcome local senior citizens into the school for a morning filled with connection and community. Fifth graders served as gracious hosts, engaging in conversation, playing games, and enjoying breakfast with their special guests. The event reached an extra special moment when preschool and kindergarten students made a surprise appearance to perform songs. The joy was palpable, genuine smiles and meaningful interactions lit up the room. It was a beautiful reminder of the power of bringing generations together and the lasting bonds that can form when a community gathers with purpose and heart. To celebrate Black History Month, Sherman Schools' fifth-grade students took part in a powerful and engaging project that combined research, creativity, and community. Each student selected a Black historical figure to study and created a detailed poster to showcase their life and contributions. The project culminated in a gallery-style event held in the gym where families, fellow students, and staff were invited to view the displays. Students stood proudly beside their posters, sharing what they had learned and bringing history to life. The event not only deepened students' understanding of Black history, but also created a meaningful opportunity for families to engage in their children's education and celebrate important cultural contributions together. Sherman School recently hosted an exciting Read Across America event with a fun Dogman twist, made possible through this, through support from the Roseville Park Police Department and the Board of Education. The evening featured, sorry, I cannot read with my glasses on. The evening featured police officers reading aloud from the beloved Dogman series, much to the delight of students and their families. Children enjoyed themed activities and had a chance to win books through raffles and were treated to delicious refreshments provided by Pomtonian Food Service. The event created a lively, literacy-focused atmosphere that encouraged students to embrace reading in a fun and memorable way. It also served as a shining example of what can happen when schools and community partners come together in support of student learning. Thank you.
Okay, so Roseville Park High School PTO still has their Easter eggs. If you would like to order some, they will be delivered the night before Easter, and you can go hunt them in the front yard for your children. So if you haven't already done so, the order form is on Facebook on the Roseville Park PTO, Roseville Park High School PTO site. Also, Roseville Park High School is looking for people for nominations for the board for next year. All positions are open, so if you are interested, please let us know.
I just wanna piggyback on Z's, talking about Matilda, what a fabulous show our students put on, the set design, the singing, just a fabulous, fabulous show, and thanks to the students and the teachers involved in the show, just wanna thank them.
So Robert Gordon is doing a movie night on April eleventh. It will be three dollars per person at six PM, and the movie will be Hop. They're having, actually it says here, they're having their meeting tonight, which is not true, they canceled it. It will be April twenty-fourth, which actually will be canceled again because we're having our meeting on April twenty-fourth. So I'll wait to see what time their meeting will be, and they'll be posting it. We're having teacher appreciation on May fifth through, May fifth through the ninth. Please help all your teachers, help every school, everybody will need donations. Robert Gordon is asking for donations, they actually need juice, water, snacks. They have a page that is asking for each one, you will see. Also, on the twenty-third, it will be Admin Professional Day. So the high school has a great professionals, Ms. Ann and Ms. Lisa, which is amazing, so let's keep them in mind and appreciate them. Thank you.
I just wanted to also wish everyone a happy Passover and a very happy Easter as well, and that's it.
One thing that I wanna note is that the budget will be posted for all to review online tomorrow, and a Google form will also be posted along with it to provide feedback and address any questions as well. And so with that being said, we're gonna move into public participation. So each member of the public may speak a maximum of three minutes, and please state your name for the record.
I would also like to congratulate Mrs. Morrison on her retirement. My oldest was, had her in seventh grade, and they loved her. We ran out of agendas, so I had to pull one up on my phone, and it did not match what was said out loud here at the meeting. I'm sure there are changes being made at the last minute, but it would be great if an updated agenda can get posted to the website so that the people who are at home can actually follow along with what's happening. And I swear the sign up front, I could be wrong, my eyes are old, said that the next meeting was on the twenty-second, but the website says the twenty-fourth, and I assume that's the budget hearing. Yes, but which day? Thanks.
It's the twenty-fourth. We realized that the twenty-second was close because of spring break and the extra day that we gave back, so it's the twenty-fourth.
Yep, thank you.
Also, I just wanna add, we added a QR code as well outside for, so that we could reduce our, our paper outtake, and, but thank you for letting us know, especially about what's happening online, so thank you.
Frank Agudaro, just going off of what Chris was talking about, the middle school, but basically all schools, with Lucy would said about teachers' appreciation, very important in May, give your love back to the teachers, look for, we have a signup genius in the middle school, so just look up for the Facebook web, for the PTA Middle School, and you'll find a link there for any donations that we're looking for, for teachers' appreciation. Also, we're coming close to the end of the year, this will be my final run for the middle school. Very sad to leave that school, I mean, my daughter went through there, and my sons are now in eighth grade, so hopefully we finish out strong. The eighth grade is very close to reaching their goal, to have every eighth-grade student go to the dance for, absolutely for free over at Castle Del Ray. So we have the donation right now, I'm sorry, the fundraiser right now is the gift back giveaway. Go to the, you can go to the Middle School PTA twenty-four, twenty-five, you'll see a link there. Also, we have at Dowling's, the week the kids have off, on the sixteenth, which is a Wednesday, it's all day, ten percent goes back to the kids, that's for to-go and dine-in. And then the final thing we have is a car wash on the twenty-sixth, which will be at the Church of Assumptions, and that will be running from ten to four. So just look out for any, everything is the best to find on Facebook, and hopefully with Goyse's information that she sends out, it will be also on there. Thanks, guys.
Frank, you said April twenty-sixth?
April twenty-sixth, yes.
And thank you, Frank, for reminding us, April twenty-sixth, also the high school's having a car wash also. So you can do both.
You can do both. Send one, one car goes to the middle school, and the other car goes to the high school.
And they're also doing a clothes.
There you go, there you go.
And they're doing a, and, and they're doing a clothes drive also, right, Jody? A clothes?
Just send somebody over there with like sodas, and as, as they get washed, go, oh, now you gotta go to the high school to get it washed. Thanks, guys. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jackie Garcia, Roselle Park. I wanted to publicly acknowledge and commend this board for reigniting the Roselle Park Vision Committee for twenty-thirty-five. An important step towards developing forward thinking, as the description says, that will continue to support our children and their future, and of course, opening it up for members of the community. While some members of the Board of Education have expressed concerns about the involvement of mayor and council, citing the need to keep the board non-political and bipartisan, I believe those comments overlook the key truth. Taxpayers shoulder the responsibilities on both sides. Our children, our schools, and our community benefit most when the Board of Education and the municipal government work collaboratively. Not in isolation or in opposition. When we operate in silos, we miss opportunities for stronger programs. Shared resources and unified advocacy. The best results come when we sit at the table together, focus on the shared goals of the community for the children, providing the highest quality of education and support for every child in our community. So I just wanna encourage everyone, as we reignite, to please come together as a board and work collaboratively with the municipal government. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jenja Skula, Roselle Park. I just wanna address this. I've been up here many, many, many years, and I gotta tell you, I'm a little frustrated right now. Um, parliamentary procedure. Can we please do a training? Because what just happened here was so wrong. You made a motion, it didn't pass. I'm understanding on my end, it should have been two-thirds, you should have voted on the original motion first. Like, we need to figure this out because it just looks bad for us. I'm sorry, guys, uh, like all of you, but this has been an ongoing issue with our board for years. I don't know where it starts, where it stops, but maybe, maybe it's time to bring in a parliamentarian and look at what we need to do and to do it properly. Because just, and I'm gonna pick on you for a second, Chris, you voted yes, that's where it should have stopped. You don't get to change your vote after you start to do it. You should have made another motion. It's just difficult. We've got into trouble before with this. We've got to start to look at what we're doing, if we're doing our procedures properly. That's all I really wanna say. I'm just frustrated. Twenty-plus years I've been coming, twenty-plus years I've saying the same thing. Please, Brittany, please, Ms. Goys, bring in a parliamentarian and take a class. We expect our clubs to work like that. We should expect our board to work correctly. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else for public participation, I'm going to close it, and can I have a motion for adjournment?
Make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, the next scheduled board meeting will be held on Thursday, April twenty-fourth at six PM. The board meeting will be held in the Roselle Park High School Auditorium, where formal action may be taken at this special meeting. The next regular scheduled board meeting will be held on Tuesday, May twentieth at six PM. The board meeting will be held in Roselle Park High School Auditorium. Thank you and have a great night.